Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our special council meeting for June 2, 7:00 p.m. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, if you'd take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dold.
Show Councilmember Dold absent and excused.
Councilmember Karafodis.
Here.
We have a quorum of six.
Thank you. Okay, first, item four is items for consideration, action items. First one is fiscal year 2526, our water and sewer rate ordinance, and this is to call for a public hearing.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dold.
I move to introduce and call for a public hearing on Monday, June 23, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. to receive comments and propose fiscal year 225 and 26 water rate ordinance.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Discussion from the table, from the public, and this is only on, if you have an opinion or a comment on calling for a public hearing on this. Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Item two is to call for a public hearing on the general appropriation ordinance. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on Monday, June 23, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. to receive comment on proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 Fund 592 General Appropriation Ordinance.
Support.
Support from Mayor Protem Dold. Comments from table, from the public? Again, this is just on the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Okay, item B is discussion on the streetlight assessment. I think this was brought up by some councilmembers that wanted to discuss it.
That's correct, Mayor. This was just an opportunity for council to, it was requested to open up and discuss the street lighting assessment included in the 2526 budget year, and just going forward, council's opportunity to speak on it.
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafodis.
So, we all know we had the lighting assessment for, I think, 11 years. The last time it was renewed, it was renewed for five years, but when it was red, it wasn't red as five years. Last year, when we found out we really weren't getting our lights replaced, and we thought that's what it was for, even though Mr. Gibbons has showed us that's not what it's for, we voted to take it out. It wasn't explained to council that we were taking it out for last year only, and then it would just automatically be in this year again. So, we were supposed to talk about the last meeting, and I think we all got sidetracked with the water. So, I think that's something that we need to talk about. We voted last year to take it out. I assumed it was forever, not just this year, so.
Okay. Further discussion from council?
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
I too thought it was removed permanently. I didn't realize this would show up again, and I'm in favor of what happened last year, and I'm in favor again to remove it. And I speak as a resident and for my neighbors, that I talked to them, and like me, they were under the understanding it was to replace our sodium lights with LED, which are, the LED are 50 to 70% more efficient. I've looked it up with municipalities, and they've saved 50 to 70% with, but now we have the grants coming for those new streetlights, and I think that that'll offset any concerns maybe in a few, a couple, two to three years about needing these funds to pay for the electricity bill for the streetlights.
Further comments? I just have a couple. For me, being here when it was first brought, well, I wasn't, I take that back, I wasn't here when it was first brought up, but watching the video, I was brought up to help pay for the lighting bill. My personal opinion right now, in the current state that we're in, we won't see any real savings till probably 2030 because they won't finish until '28, 2028. So, it's $350,000 at the city that we're already fighting a budget to try and get balanced, that we're gonna end up having to try and find $350,000 more for the $30 a year, which $2 and something a month to help pay that, at least until we start recouping some of that with the savings. I'm fine with keeping it, but.
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafodis.
What did you mean by 2028?
Well, because the grant, the first grant's gonna go into effect, I believe, starting next year, 20, I think, '26, and then '28 is when the second half of that grant's gonna start, to replace the rest of them.
I can clarify, Mayor. So, we were awarded one grant from the state that'll be this year, basically, but it'll take some time to put it in motion. SEMCOG, the other half of that, is not till 2028, when those will come in. And just to be clear, the savings is not 50 to 70% on those bills. It's probably more like 10%. So, you know, right now, our light bills are $650,000 in just electricity costs, so it'd be about, you know, $65,000 savings for the LEDs. I was disappointed to hear that it wasn't the savings that I would have liked to have heard, but, I mean, it's still a positive, and I'm so very glad we've got them, and I think it's a great step in the right direction, but the savings isn't the same.
Right. Mayor.
Well done.
Well, what I was gonna say is, I know that, once we get it, it is gonna be taken care of right away. Like I said, the city of Ann Arbor got all of their lights replaced in just last year in a couple months. So, once it's there, they get the work done pretty quick. I mean, we're a pretty small city. And when it talks about the savings, again, I realize that's what it wasn't meant for, but our public was under the impression that for 11 years, they were paying that $350,000. That's a lot of money to pay to think you were getting something when you got nothing because there was only lights changed that very first year when Bob Murray was here, and he got the grant from DTE and changed a couple lights. Since then, we've been told over and over again that these lights were getting changed. I even asked our previous administration to show me what lights were changed and what records and all that, and that was never produced. So, again, everybody, not just me, was led to believe that they were paying for something that we never got. So, now to take it away last year and then say this year, oh, sorry, we're out of luck, we're out of money, you guys gotta start paying again. I just, I get it, but it's a tough one to swallow.
Yep.
Councilmember King.
Just to touch on the savings from the LED, I agree, I think it's actually less than 10%. My understanding from Miller's grant was replacing about 500 lights. Looking back at the paperwork, I think we have about 2,000 lights, streetlights throughout the city, and it was only $9,000 savings, which is pretty minimal, right? And DTE costs right now, at least what we have budgeted for, is $655,000, so it drops it down to barely $645,000, or, you know, whatever. I guess my thought on it, back in 2011, when they implemented this lighting assessment, we were charging $3730, I believe. We're bringing about $421,000 in from the residents. Back then, the DTE cost was about $478,000, so pretty close to that $421 we were bringing in. So, residents, basically, through their special assessment, was paying about 86% of the bill. The city has been reducing that special assessment value. We now pay $30.89, however, DT bill has gone up, of course, they've changed, I think they've changed the rates.
They're going for another increase.
Well, and I think the rates, I think the rates from non-LED to LED was greater difference. I don't know. I believe they're more similar, and that's why we're not seeing as big of a savings.
But they last longer, though, too.
Right. So, I think they've adjusted their rates, so we're not seeing as much of a savings replacing those lights to LED as we once saw. But with that, paying $30.89 now, with the DT costing $655,000, that's about 53% now the residents are pitching in. I am in favor in reducing the current rate, however, I think it's too much to just remove it entirely. That's a $350,000 difference in our revenue for our budget. I think if we were gonna do that, we had to find some expenses to cut. I wouldn't feel comfortable taking off 350 revenue without finding the exact expenses where it's gonna compensate that, that amount. I would prefer, because we've cut so much this year, I would like to leave it at $30.89. However, I think next year's budget, I think we need to move it down to $25, and eventually phase it out so that the general fund is paying for the lighting assessment. I'm just not for this year, just because we've already had to do quite a few cuts and find another $350,000. At least when I was going through the budget, I didn't see where we'd find that money. That's my thought.
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafodis.
I just feel like our city has to be responsible, I mean, we're, we have the millage for the police and fire, we're getting ready to hit everybody with water, we're paying for part of the electric, I mean, at some, I mean, I guess the balance is we have a great DPS, but it's like the city is, has to be responsible for some of the things that we pay for our taxes, and I just feel like we're gonna come back here in two weeks, and we're gonna say, hey, your water's gonna go up 49%, and yeah, last week, we said, yep, we're putting another $350 back into the budget, and you're gonna pay your lighting assessment that you've already paid for 11 years. It's just, I just, maybe we should just take a vote. I guess it's not.
Comments?
It wasn't easy. I've been grappling with this for, really, I mean, I've been losing sleep over it almost, because I know that the city would be hard to find $350,000 to cover it, but yet, I feel like I owe it to myself and the residents, who, and not in 2018, in 2011, when it first came on the proposal. That was our understanding, it was made, I asked my neighbors, they were, I said, what do you think this is for? And they, they too. So, it's a tough situation, but I feel like there's a letter of the law, and then there's a spirit of the law, so to speak.
Go ahead, Councilmember Karafodis.
I just feel it's misrepresented, and it sucks that now we have to make some hard choices, and I get it, and our city manager's trying to find everything he can to go out of the budget, but it just seems like it's misrepresentative, and when we tell the public, oh, well, it was misrepresented, you're out of luck. I mean, just even the last renewal, when it was stated that we're gonna renew it, everybody thought it was one year because it wasn't red as five years. It never should have been gone as five years. We don't even do that. I don't think we do anything here for five years, so.
I think the assessment was done in those increments since 2011.
It was not, and it wasn't even red as a five-year assessment. It just was red, and that was it.
At the last one, or the previous?
The previous one, because last year is the first year that we said we're not gonna do it. So, like I said, I just feel like it's a misrepresentation from everybody. I mean, we're saying, hey, we're gonna do this this year, and then last year, we take it out, and we're like, oh, sorry, faked you out, we're just gonna do it again. I mean, if we wouldn't have brought it up, I mean, the city manager had mentioned it early in the budget season, yes, we'd be bringing it up because he knew that it was, it would have to come before us, but I don't think anybody that voted on it last year knew it was gonna be here again.
No, but I'd agree with that. Again, my only thing would be, this year with the situation with the water, for the $30, I'd be more opposed to leave it in this year, and then possibly, like Councilmember King said, phase it out, or even take it out completely when city manager has more time to find $350,000. Further comments?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
I just want to point out that was a seven, it was unanimous to take it out last year by council.
I gotta agree with the Councilmember Karafodis and Ms. Hughes, Councilmember Hughes, that this is just bad timing. With the light, I'm having a hard time even going with the increase with the light assessment, period, and now we wanna slap another $30 a month or?
$30 a year.
Year or whatever. We have so many senior citizens that are hurting in this city, they can't afford either one of these, let alone to double up on it. But I'd like to pause it for at least another year till we see what happens with the general fund and the water fund and all that, see where we stand in the future, not right now. All I got.
Okay. Further comments?
Just if council, it is their discretion to remove that revenue from the budget, I'll just need some direction as to where council would like that money to come from. You know, there's, we take further out of the general fund? Is there a department to cut something from? I just, just how you'd like it to proceed. I've heard, you know, a council member mention they weren't comfortable with it coming out of general fund, then we'll have to, you know, address this, because if we remove revenue from the budget, we need to equal it out with an appropriate appropriations reduction, or an increase in use of fund balance. So, just something that, you know, that will be the next step.
Last year, it came from rainy day fund, correct?
Correct.
What choices do we have? The rainy day fund and the general fund?
Correct. It would be, it would have to be a general fund reduction or an increase in the use of the, a general fund, either we spend less money, or we borrow more, or we take more from our savings. So, it's gotta be, you know, one of those two are really options, because we do have to present a balanced budget. So, I believe it was 700 and some thousand we would be taking out of the general fund if we don't do the lighting assessment, otherwise, I'll have to go back and find $350.
I was gonna say it's $350.
Yep, $350, but, you know, right now, we're currently using $350 of the general fund, so this would be an additional $350 on top of that, so it'd be seven.
What do you mean, we're additional $350?
So, we are budgeting a use, a $350,000 use of general fund balance this year to balance our budget. Next, if we take $350 of revenue, there's two choices, it's reduce appropriations or expenditures, or use more of the general fund balance to get us to 700,000 in fund balance use.
Mayor. Councilmember King.
I guess just to add on that, my understanding, the reason why we budget $200,000 to $300,000 from the general fund is because, you know, the city budget's a little different than business and your home budget, where we set appropriations, and you cannot go over any one of those line items for what we set. So typically, each one's gonna come in a little less, and you may end up balancing out perfectly and not pulling anything from the general fund, or you may add to the general fund or pull a little bit. However, if you add another $350, you take it to about 3/4 of a million, that possibility is now no longer there. You're not gonna come in that much less, and we will be definitely pulling from the general fund again for another year. Am I correct, Mr. Gibbons?
It's just a bigger hill to climb. You know, my goal is starting out the year with anticipating a worst-case scenario is, in my mind, as we pull $350 in from the general fund balance to make the budget balance, that was the initial budget proposition. The farther we get away from that $350, if we go to seven, it's just that much more we have to reduce throughout the year, and it becomes pretty difficult to maintain operations with that, you know? So, it just depends, so, you know, is it better to make the cuts now and get the prediction right, or is it, you know, or 700,000 the hill we have to climb throughout the year to reduce our expenses even further? And, you know, as has been stated, this is a, this is a tight budget, this was a lot of reductions and a lot of cuts that got us to this point, you know? And just speaking to last year's vote, as I, you know, as we addressed this on the April 28 meeting, and I just wanna rehash, like, you know, I went back and looked at this diligently and, you know, found that, yeah, the purpose of this was legally allowed, and in the writing, in the 2011 proposal to do it, and in the writing sense, it fit where I would understand that we could use it for, it was within the intent of the council at the time. How the public perceived it and how it was communicated, I can't speak for, I was in the police department during that whole time. No one asked my opinion back then. But at this point, it's just to give council that full information is that, yes, that, you know, I'm comfortable with it staying in, but also ultimately, it's council's decision how they wanna handle these issues. But also, on that flip side, I'll just, I'll just need some direction as to what we would like to see happen. Is it more general fund use budgeted, or is it, you know, identify places where we can continue to reduce the overall expenditures?
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafodis.
Can I make a motion to remove it for one year? Can I make a motion to remove the lighting assessment for one year and to reevaluate next year?
You can.
Okay.
Is that what you?
Yep, I make a motion to remove the lighting assessment for one year and reevaluate in 2026.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Comments from, further comments from table?
Mayor, if we're gonna do that, what are the ideas of council to reduce the budget so that we are still within about $300,000 pulling from the general fund?
Well, considering I don't have the budget in front of me, I don't think that that would be something we could decide right now.
I guess I would recommend tabling until Mr. Gibbons can present us with some ideas of.
If council wishes to take a vote, I can come back with the next meeting with an appropriations adjustment that we'd have to approve anyways. I mean, the process would be the same, so if council's inclined to vote on it tonight, I can, can give me the time to, because the clerk and I spoke about this just in the event that it happened, so, you know, we would have to go back and then I have to let the mayor know that the revenues are insufficient to meet our expenditures, so we'll have to take action at the next meeting to either do one of those two things we discussed.
We have a meeting in two weeks. Okay, further comments from table?
I would also be in favor of waiting till we have a full table up here. We have a council member missing, older, whatever.
Oh, because?
So now, okay, so now you'd rather table it for two weeks? Is that, is that what I'm getting at? Are you asking for that?
Right.
Okay. That would be up to Councilmember Karafodis and Councilmember Hughes, if they wanna do, make a vote today, or?
I think we just make a vote today.
Further discussion from table? Okay, from general public.
I think y'all do one or two things. Either just go ahead and cancel the street lighting assessment, or turn the streetlights off. To me, that would be fine, so, because you're gonna create another $350,000, you're gonna pay it anyway. If you keep them on, you're gonna pay the bill. It's just a matter of where you get the money, I guess, and you, no need me to say this again, but that's one of the most fair ways to do it. I don't have a streetlight from the city because I'm on Inxtra Road, which is a county road, plus I got the hospital lights, so, but like I said, it wouldn't be, I shouldn't say anything about it anyway, because I grew up for 18 years where you couldn't see your hand that far in front of you, coming between the trees over the road.
Thank you. Further comments from public?
Mayor, members of the council, Anthony Tackett, Fairfield Street. First, thank you, each of you, for the amount of discussion and clear pain that it takes to come to these decisions, given that the amount is, what, about roughly $30 a year per citizen? In this particular case, I'm inclined to, as much as it pains me to say so, agree with Councilmember King, that for the individual citizen cost of $30 for the year, that's pennies a day. With the rest of the problems that we have in the city, it would be irresponsible to not address this and not deal with it, you know, in a more fiscally responsible manner, I suppose. And while years passed, I would not, absolutely not, trust the administration of this city to make the right choices. Events of the recent past have given me hope that there is, in fact, reason to trust in the leadership and the direction that the city's heading. So, as cheapishly as I can possibly do it, I would put support behind keeping the assessment in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments?
When the lighting assessment was first added, I don't remember if it was just a temporary thing or not, but it was supposed to reduce the cost, and eventually, that cost would go away. So, what happened to all that money, all those years, and nothing was done? Nobody was held accountable for how many lights there were in the city, how many had been changed over, what the status on anything was. And then all of a sudden, people started complaining, and now we're gonna remove it for, they removed it for this year, and then all of a sudden, bingo, there it is, back in, we're gonna start paying again. And yet, nobody's held accountable. It's the same thing when the city wants money from us, it's no problem, but when the citizens start complaining about that money that has disappeared, everybody has issues. The 1.5 mils that was added during COVID, what happened to all that money? That was supposed to be taken away if we didn't need it, and we didn't need it. So, where did all that money disappear to? Where did all the money from the water department disappear to? Where has all of this money gone to? So, when us citizens now fight back about the lighting assessment, which nobody's really held accountable for, everybody starts complaining up here that, well, we gotta cut something else from the budget. Well, you know what? Should've thought of that when all that money started disappearing. And there's two of you that I'm looking at right now that could've had some say in that maybe stopped it, and you didn't. So, my feeling is that we don't need to keep paying for those lights. We paid for it years and years, and nobody was ever held accountable. Nobody knows what happened to that money. So, I think citizens need to keep that voice going, that we deserve something from this city.
Thank you. Further comments? Any more comments from the public? I will say this, nobody on council was here in 2011 when this first went into effect. And the money that you were talking about, that the water fund, it is accountable. City Manager Gibbons, maybe in the next meeting, we can, you can provide what was bought and paid for with it. There were water mains, there was equipment for DPW, it is all accounted for. The problem was, what wasn't accounted or provided for was replacing the money that was spent out of that savings. That was, we were putting safeguards in that that won't happen again, but the money was there, the money was spent on proper things, it just wasn't replaced. They should've raised, it should've been, when you, when you pay for something out of your savings, at least I do, I try to replace it, so I still have the same amount in my savings account. That was not done. That was the mistake that happened, but all the money is accounted for, and I know the city manager, and I've gone over a lot of this stuff, and it is there. It just wasn't replaced as it was spent.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
And the money for the street lighting assessment was used to offset the bill. It wasn't a fund that was building up like the water balance was, so it's not where it was put in an account as a rainy day fund, and it was just used. It was used every year to offset the bill. So, as the money came in from the taxes, it went straight to pay DTE's bill, and was set aside in the budget to pay that bill as they came through.
Mayor, I'd also like to address that Mr. Tackett said, everybody at this table trusts our current administration, for sure, and we do appreciate his advice, but sometimes we just have to decide things according to what's happened previous to today.
Okay. Would you read the motion?
Yep. I have motion to remove street lighting assessment for a period of one year and remove expected revenue from fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget.
Okay, can you take a roll call?
Councilmember Karafodis?
Yea.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Nay.
Councilmember Witt?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Dold?
Yea.
Mayor Jacobs?
Nay.
Motion is a tie vote, so motion fails.
Yeah. Okay, moving forward, public comment, item five. Anybody wishing to speak on issues? Anyone from the public wishing to speak?
It's gonna be that you guys make a little tough decision. I'm glad you made it, but it's okay. And as far as the water fund, I know you put in pipes, you did a lot of stuff, but like you said, you didn't replace the fund, and if you had, I'd have been screaming at you because you'd have been raising my taxes sky high to replace it, so you did good. The difference is fine, there's no problem with that, and like I said, yeah, get it.
Thank you. Further comments from the public?
Mayor, members of the council, city manager, just to qualify what I said earlier, I feel it's important to just kind of point out that when I referred to recent events, for the public's interest and edification, I've spent time on the phone, over chats, and email with most members of the council over the last several weeks, trying to work through the water issue. I spent an hour.
I spent an hour in office with our city manager, and we had a very, very, what I would categorize as an intimate conversation, that I felt was very enlightening. It would, wasn't the, the most happy conversation I've ever had, and certainly, i, i, it was not all good news, but as I, as I mentioned before, I think that there's a lot of trust in the direction that we're going in. Councilmember Witt took about two hours out of his evening one night to, to share concerns with me and, and to chat, to chat back and forth. Councilmember Hughes, President Protem, or, excuse me, Mayor Protem, I don't want to give you too much of a promotion.
President.
You get what I'm saying, man. Councilmember Karafotos, Mayor Jacobs, each of you guys spent some time with me talking about the issues and whatnot. So I feel more than, than, than happy with the idea that things were done in the past that weren't supposed to be done, perhaps, or at least were, there were better ways to have done it, might have been available. But moving forward, we're putting places, in place protections, where we're seeing action, where the city manager, who sat in that, that seat last time we were in this room, presented protections that would make his job more difficult, not, not more easy, but would be responsible and would be safety for the citizens and their, their finances moving forward. Nobody wants to spend more money, nobody wants to have to take more money from the citizens. The matter of the fact is, there were some, some financial decisions made that could have been made better. There are a few members of the council that I'm sure understand that there were decisions made that could have been perhaps well, better informed. But nonetheless, we find ourselves where we are today, and there is unfortunately only one way forward here. And as much as it hurts, and as much as it's going to hurt, we kind of all got to suck it up and do it, because the other side of that coin, frankly, is a hell of a lot scarier than what we're looking at right now. I've lived through it as an employee of a jurisdiction who went through that. We do not, and I want to underline that several times, not want that type of involvement from the state. It will put the city on its face, not upside down, straight down on the pavement on its face. So we are not yet in a critical situation where we have to start really panicking, panicking. There are some very painful things that have to, to happen here, but as long as they're properly managed, and as long as you don't quit, I, I think that we're probably going to be in good hands. So thank you, chief, and thank you, members of council.
Thank you. Further comments? Any other comments from the public? Okay, I'll close that. We'll do city council comments. Mayor, or, city manager Gibbons, anything?
Nothing for tonight, Your Honor. Mayor, just, I, you know, I will do my best between now and that public hearing for water rates and the appropriation, to set an appointment with each council member. I, you know, provided a packet of information, it'll be made available for the public if it hasn't already, between now and that public hearing, to make sure everyone has all the choices. You know, we are proposing a certain rate tonight, but I'm providing council information that gives them a, a series of options, that I'm, I'm still recommending the one I did, but, but I want, I want council to have enough options. And then also, on the 19th, feel that they have some things to choose from and don't have to come up with anything on the fly, that we just have a, a set series of rates that you can choose from. All of them have their negatives, every single one of them, because they're increases. But I, I tried to list out the reasons and, and what we can do about those. So I'm looking forward to sitting down with each council member between now and the 23rd, whereas, which is our public hearing, and continue to get a solution to this.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Just briefly, good evening, mayor and council. So we are now, the clerk's office is currently taking in permits for the citywide garage sale, so like, from June 19th through the 22nd, permit fees are waived, but like I mentioned at a previous council meeting, we are just asking that you come in, fill out the permit, so that way we know who's participating, and then that way we can get your name on our map that we're going to post the week of the sale. We're going to do a couple more things differently this year. If you are a commercial business who would like to do a little sidewalk sale at the same time as the citywide garage sale, we will waive the special event fees that we would normally charge for that, allow you to participate in the outdoor sidewalk sale. Same thing applies, though, just come to the clerk's office anytime between now and June 16th, give us your address, we'll get you on the map.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Doold?
I've only got one thing. I wanted to thank Chief Honusky and the officers involved for my ride-along experience. Wow, what an amazing night, and it was a quiet night at that, but I was still very impressed with your men and women go through every night. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
I'd like to congratulate Officers Jonathan Cant, Marcin, Marcin, and Gregory Good, Goodbred. They were recognized and awarded Police Officer of the Year 2025 for the, for the fire, what they, what they contributed to save that woman through, you know, from the fire.
That it? That it? Councilmember, that it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Just a congratulations to the class of 2025 from Garden City High School. Was there on Friday, unfortunately, we had a little bit of rain, but we made it through.
It was a little wet and a little cold. All right, thank you. Councilmember King?
I don't have anything tonight, mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Karafotos?
I just had one thing, I want to remind everybody about the 24th Annual Autos for Autism. It's coming up Monday, June 16th at the middle school. Come on out, see some cool cars and some cool bikes.
For a good cause.
For a great cause, yep.
Thank you. The only thing I have is I want to congratulate the, the class of 25 also, and I know Cambridge is coming up, so congratulations to those graduating out of Cambridge. No more comments there. Item six is, I need a motion, or?
Mayor.
Motion for closed session. Councilmember Witt?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session at 7:37 PM for strategy and negotiations session connected with the negotiations, negotiations of a collective bargaining agreement pursuant to MCL 15.268C related to contract negotiations with the Command Officers Association of Michigan, the COAM, and to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute pursuant to MCL 1515.268H to receive a written legal opinion regarding lease of city property.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Karafotos. Discussion from table. From the public? All in favor?
Mayor, and then the motion to go into closed session is a roll call vote.
Okay. Roll, take roll call, please.
Councilmember Witt?
Aye.
Councilmember Karafotos?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Doold?
Aye.
Mayor Jacobs?
Aye.